Welcome friends gamers and other enthusiasts to the Void of Zen channel. I hope you enjoy your time here and the video. Please like subscribe to all the bell icons and comments. It really does help small content creators like myself and others by doing so. If you click on the notifications, it may even let others and the YouTube gods know that they may enjoy these videos. With that being said, let's play. Thank you for joining me on my journey to city skylines. This is episode three. This is a quick overview of what the city Boyton looks like. We've already surpassed Hamlet, we're now at Worthy Village. The year is 2024. And we're going to hold our very first city council meeting on March 21st. Putting on pause and we already have the comstar news feed. The comstar news feed, March 21st, 2024 edition. Central article. Planetary government awards Boyton additional funds and technology and new building options. The future looks bright. Left article. Boyton holds first city council session. Comstar sends representative. Right article. Famed Ice Cube Factory Becomes Historical Building. Pizza van is still employed in the area. Local residents now want ice cubes and pizza? Alright, this is it. This is how comstar and the general population of Boyton views what happened today. We did hold our first, very first uh city council session in the roleplay. Quote unquote last night and here are the results. I want to remind everyone that. Boyton is a small town. As a result, the city council only has one other, you know, one. City council uh position and from comstar. Whenever comstar shows up, they show up in groups of three. The three comstar representatives that showed up. Again, even though three showed up, there was only one council position that comstar holds. The first representative is Todd Holmes. He's a comstar adept. Has some political aspirations and is a member of the order. And was the very first city council. Uh attended the very first city council meeting as, as I just stated. Originally, this person resides at the Empire Residency. And is an operator at the comstar coal power plant. The next comstar representative was a Word of Blake person. James Lewis. James Lewis is a comstar Word of Blake faction president here within the Boyton city. He attended the first city council session as a Word of Blake representative for comstar. Currently, James Lewis resides in the Umbro Residency. And is a cleaner at the Blake's Recycling Center and Garbage Collector Building. James Lewis is a avid bicyclist enthusiast. And is often seen riding his bike to and from work and is encouraging others to do so as well. The last comstar representative to attend the city council meeting is Sabrina Webb. Sabrina Webb is a comstar comguard faction leader for the Boyton chapter. Currently, Sabrina Webb resides at the Beach Residence. And is a grounds worker at the famed Ice Cube Factory. She wants a beautiful and safe city. Has no other known political agendas other than that whatever comstar may give her personally. And these are the three city council members that represent comstar. And again, comstar currently only holds one city council seat, which is the only seat at this time. During the first council meeting, the comstar representatives did have three specific agendas to discuss. The first agenda that was good, we're going to discuss. Was talking about two large industrial groups that were eager, are eager to set up shop and work within Boyton. However, each of these industrial groups had specific wants. Desires and a specific house faction that they belong to. The next thing on the agenda was about law enforcement. Something that the comguard adept and comstar representative Sabrina Webb seemed very eager to talk about. The last official thing on the agenda was about plazas, unity and parks. We decided to talk about the two industrial groups and the two house factions that seem to have an interest in Boyton first. So let's talk about them. The first one we're going to talk about is the House Creta faction. House Creta is one of the larger industrial factions here within Neo Terra. Specifically, the corporation or industrial group that is interested in Boyton is the Luthian Fishery and Manufacturing Corporation. This organization has taken Neo Terra by storm. The Luthian Fishery and Manufacturing Corporation has led the way in safely and efficiently fishing the oceans and lakes of Neo Terra. And introducing several effective methods of sustainable fishing to ensure future generations will have access to fish on Neo Terra. Currently, the House Creta faction holds the Luthian Fishery and Manufacturing Corporation in high regards. And the CEO of that organization, that company has shown keen interest in the waters near Boyton. If the city of Boyton creates a fishing industry, the Luthian Fishery and Manufacturing Corporation has pledged both House Creta support. And the support of their company to Boyton. The Luthian Fishery and Manufacturing Corporation leader. Has pledged that Mashiro Amaron, a senior vice president recently promoted would be in charge of the Boyton area. However, to secure both House Creta faction and the support of the Luthian Fishery Manufacturing Corporation. It'll take more than just a promise and some fishing buildings. The House Creta workers and families will also require and need their own specialized residence. Specialized districts, housing, infrastructure and even education within the city to move in properly. Comstar also informs the mayor, me, that House Liao is also very interested in this area near Boyton. And wants access to the farming locations near and around Boyton. Back in the inner sphere and even on Neo Terra, the House Liao faction has been hit on hard times. House Liao faction seems to be the least educated and has the largest farming industries and workers. But also as an overall faction has the least numbers. House Liao is the smallest of all major factions, but is still very interested in growing. And being near the farming areas in and around Boyton. The largest and most, most successful farming company on Neo Terra is from House Liao called the Saint Ives Farming Ranch. The Saint Ives Farming Ranch. This farming and ranch company has several important biologists. That have specifically grown cattle and livestock that will safely grow within the Neo Terra form planet of Neo Terra. Likewise, the Saint Ives Farming Ranch. Company has botanists that have specialized crops grow within the soils of Neo Terra. That will be both filling and nutritious to humans and livestock. While the vast majority of the planets does not support crops. The areas in and around Boyton show that there are potential areas that will support. Uh crops and even livestock, which is why the Saint Ives Farming Ranch. Organization is very interested and Saint uh and House Liao is also very interested in Boyton. The leader of the Saint Ives Farming Ranch is Sen Liao. Sen Liao is the tenth in line for House Liao. And is highly loyal to House, the House Liao faction and use the town of Boyton as a way to grow both House Liao numbers. Influence and money, which is something House Liao is very keen in obtaining. As a result. It makes very positive sense to get a farming industry up and running. Likewise, we've been mandated by the local government, the local planetary Neo Terra government to grow crops in the area. The next thing on the agenda that comstar and the mayor discussed was law enforcement. While crime has been low on Boyton sadly, there's been a small upkeep and increase in crime in and around Boyton. Sabrina Webb, the comguard representative within the. Representatives of comstar that is in the council meeting. Has suggested placing a comguard's police headquarters near the center of Boyton. Sabrina Webb, it was confident that the crime that's currently ongoing within Boyton. Is not from local comstar presence or residents. However, this crime is affecting everyone, including the comstar residents here within Boyton. Sabrina Webb then showed off several potential areas where she thinks that law enforcement. And coverage would be best served if we place law enforcement in that area. Sabrina Webb has also projected possible future locations as well as the future look of what. Boyton may look like in the future, so that way we can plan law enforcement coverage best. The last thing on the agenda was parks, plazas and unity. For the most part, Boyton has, does not have enough clout, fame, money or support. Any large scale plazas, monuments or parks. However, that should change. Comstar predicts that with enough time and effort, Boyton will grow, will gain enough clout, fame. And money to support large parks, plazas, monuments and unity in the area. Comstar is very interested in creating a quote unquote unity park. In the international area of Boyton. This quote unquote unity park should help bring unity and tourists to Boyton. It's a way to show off the teachings of Jerome Blake and comstar. To Neo Terra and the citizens of Boyton who are not part of comstar. However, the Worthy Village of Boyton would need to grow and show both comstar and the uh the local planetary government of Neo Terra that. Boyton is truly worthy of receiving increased funds. Uh increased buildings, plazas and parks to do such an endeavor. After a few tense discussions with the comstar representatives, the city council and mayor agreed to several different plans. And agreed where the expansion and law enforcement headquarters probably should go. When we discuss about the local town policies and creating districts to help unify and organize the residents of Boyton. Comstar made several suggestions about the international zone and the comstar districts within Boyton. And policies round about the international area and the comstar areas of Boyton. I'm, for those of you who made it this far and is listening. Speak and talk about city skylines, I do apologize. I know that I'm breaking lots of my rules by saying I'm not going to pause very often and. You know, we're several minutes into this video and for the most part, the, it's been paused for the vast majority of the time. The reason this is happening is we are building both a role playing sessions within city skylines. As well as building the foundations of a city, of a large potential city. And I view the foundations as something very important, the skeletons and the ideas and where we're going. So we need to make sure that the city grows properly, otherwise you can go bankrupt and it'll fail or it'll look ugly and what's the point, right? We're trying to grow the city both organically and also by the means slowly without any type of cheats. Without any type of council commands, without any type of mods or what have you. We're only using the vanilla assets within the game as well as any content DLCs then that are, you know, for the original game of city skylines. Again, we're not using any mods, no cheats, no council commands, no exploits, at least on that I'm aware of. So let's continue. The last thing the comstar. Representatives talked about in the council meeting and this will be the final thing is the districts and the residents of. Boyton. There had been a small complaint about some noise and. Luckily, one of the comstar adepts was, is an architect and has informed me that. One of the reasons that some of the people are starting to complain about noise is lots of the uh, some of the residents are near an arterial six lane road. Which is being used for a high traffic area and the further it goes along. The more and more traffic that six lane main road will have. Likewise, eventually it will start having industrial vehicles moving, especially if you're planning on moving west with the fishing, fish industry. You notice that we did purchase the land to the west. And the goal there is again, we're going to start a fishing industry. You notice that we can't do it now, we need to grow the city a bit more. We do need to purchase uh law enforcement, but you notice that the funds are incredibly low, so we had to hold off a bit or take a loan. Likewise, the electricity, the water needs to be increased slightly. I did increase the electricity to make sure that this forward growth does not burn out and you cause brownouts. The comstar adepts and the representatives in the city council meeting. Had us devise this new pattern for the residents. And they created the first comstar district, the Holy Order District. You'll notice that there's now two roads. Uh going north, south, our four lane. The idea here is we're trying to remove the citizens, the residents, the houses away from high traffic areas. Eventually, once we get the policies, which we can't do it right now, but once we get the policy, we'll ban heavy traffic. On that second newer north, south, four lane road. We're also encouraging uh organic foods to be close to the residents. This, we feel that, at least the comstar adups feel that one. Uh organic foods will help supply food to the residents, two, it tends to be less noisy for residents. We're going to hit play and let's see what happens. You knows my funds are extremely low, so this will be a danger point to us. Money is always a concern and then there's the police. We will need the law enforcement drastically. If crime spikes, we may have to take a loan just to get law enforcement in the area. Eventually, I do want to move the school and a. Med clinic closer to the residential area. Again, what's happening is. Comstar. And again, this is something that we're, we're both doing for as a fore shadowing and also forward thinking. But we're also doing it in such a way that it's less efficient. We're not trying to min max the game. You'll notice that I'm not rushing to, let's say, cap, you know, you know, 20 levels higher. You know, to get like capital cities, so I have more options, right? I'm trying to enjoy the game and we're roleplaying the situation. During the council meeting, comstar uh did notice that there, that some citizens have started to slightly complain about the noise. To reduce the noise threat, removing the residential area away from high value roads. And what we plan on doing, once we get the authorization and the policy to do so, is we're going to ban. Uh traffic on the presenter way, that's that westmost road that's going north, south, that's four lane. That road, we're going to start banning, you know, once we get the capabilities to. Uh trucks and industrial vehicles from going in there, so that way only residential vehicles should be going. And for the most part, that should make the residential area much more quiet. Likewise, the commercial is acting as a buffer. To the noise as well. And you'll notice that the patterns I'm going to try and, you know, have, you know, for a little bit. It's going to change from time to time and I'm also looking at the water and I noticed that we, that the industry needs are getting higher, so. I'm going to place a new road and throw in industry. We need to start improving then in the industrial sector of Boyton as well. Money is money, we need to make profits, right? And the more business that we can bring in, the more money we're going to make, the most, more citizens that are, have a job, the more money we can tax them for. You know, the more money they could spend on commercial buildings and then commercial buildings can get taxed and they get happy. So it's a win, win, win situation, but getting back to the roads. Removing the residential areas away from the six lane arterial road, the main road. To the north, that's going east, west, west, east. And we're moving them away from the eastmost residential north, south road. This way. The, hopefully, there will be less noise for the residents. And we can control it a little bit better. Likewise, you notice that the Holy Order District is primarily for comstar residents. And they're going self efficient homes, so it'll help with the electricity somewhat. Likewise, the commercial areas are organic. Within the zone. Now I'm taking a loan because I noticed that there is, you look right next to the med clinic, that there's crime. And we need to get rid of the crime. So I'm deciding to place a, the police department there. Now I'm choosing this police department because it looks beautiful. You know, it's a quaint little office, it has some trees in the middle. And, and, and right now, we're trying to bring up the beauty of the town. And why not have, I know eventually this area is going to be more industrial. But for the time being, we can enjoy this area and make it look beautiful, right? Because we also want a beautiful city. We don't want, you know, tons of wall, there'll be areas of the city which will have tons of concrete, tons of wall. The other thing about the Holy Order District is I consider this area to be the older area of Boyton, right? This is the first area of Boyton. As a result, you'll notice that the residential area and the buildings in this area are getting the Queens and Bronx look. And the reason I'm picking that look is those buildings tend to look older, in my opinion. Age type buildings to designate in like the old town. Now, I don't have the non-comstar order, you know, residents uh updated, I eventually will. Give them a district and do the same situation with them. They'll probably won't have uh the green houses. Cause again, you know, primarily it's the comstar agents that are doing this. Now I'm selecting. Of the fire department, even though we don't have any fires yet. The fires, you know, it's becoming more or less necessary. And I'm looking for an area that I can put it that is both centralized, but primarily deals with the industrial place. And I'm going. For this fire department and I put it slightly centralized, but favoring the industry, right? And of course, this is comguards. Fire Safety Center, since we haven't had a fire technically, it's not a fire department yet. This is the fire safety, this is let all the residents of Boyton know how to deal with fire. Fire is hot, fire is bad, that building will tell them. This is let all the residents of Boyton know how to deal with fire. Fire is hot, fire is bad. That building will tell them. We're following this biofuel garbage truck. This is a recycling truck. Just let, let everyone know, at least it should. Now, let's talk about the next goals. The next goal in the city is I want to move the school and the med clinic closer to the residential area. While yes, they were right next to residential area, I kinda moved the residential area away from them. So we're going to need to move it back. But the actual next goal is to pay off the loans. We need, we took some loans. And while we're still making a profit, we should pay it off because you know, that way if an emergency happens, we could always take out a loan. My experience is always pay off the loans whenever possible. That way, if you need an emergency funds of, of uh influx of money, you can, you can get a loan. If you're just paying it off and, and then an emergency happened, can't grab a loan, right? So my experience is pay off the loan as soon as you can. And you know, you don't have to necessarily rush to raise taxes. I like to keep the taxes constant. You know, i- if I need to raise taxes to make money, I'm doing something wrong. Now, I did raise tax originally in the very beginning, but again, you know, that was just to kind of set boundaries to to the city, because I'm trying to, you know, encourage more, slightly more commercial buildings. I want to I do want to encourage slightly more in commercial buildings than uh industrial buildings. Slightly. Sorry, I, I thought I heard an alarm. I have to apologize. Someone was actually contacting me through steam and it was creeping me. I know y'all can't hear it, which luckily for you, you didn't hear it. I was hearing like some sort of weird alarm. It was actually a steam notification. So with that being said, I am trying to encourage a commercial focus for the city slightly larger than a industrial focus. I, both of them are important. Don't get me wrong, but that, that's my slight plan. I, I want to have a large commercial uh focus for the city. But also have a strong industry as well. I did look at the pollution, and if you notice that the water, the lake is getting slightly blue, the ends going southwards. I'm also looking at my funds, I'm just now reaching ten K in funds, so I'm doing well. Now, I still have that loan, I want to pay it off. And I'm noticing that the electricity is getting lower and lower. And I'm wondering, it's like, is it time to purchase electricity? But there's so much to do. And then I noticed that the electricity wasn't as low as I thought, and I'm thinking to myself, perhaps the coal plant lacks some coal and it just recently got its supply, so it, it re-energized itself. With loans in City Skylines, you can, you automatically pay them every week, a small amount. The minimum payment, quote unquote. You can also pay it early. Paying it early gives you two advantages. One, you don't pay as much interest. So ultimately speaking, the loan costs slightly less. The longer you have out a loan, a- and this works in real life too, imagine this. The more it's going to cost the city. Even though it's a small amount every week, it, it adds up. Money's money. You know, a thousand dollars here versus a thousand dollars later. Now, I paid off the loan. The other reason I like paying off loans earlier, early, and I mentioned this previously, is in emergency situations. If there is ever an emergency situations where I need an influx of cash, you, you take the loan, which is why loans are out there. However, if you already have a loan, you can't take on it again, so in emergency situations, and if you need an influx of cash for whatever reason, you're kinda SOL, right? Which is why you should always pay off your loans, so that way, in a tight, weird emergency situations, you can get a loan. I'm not trying to rush to the next milestone yet. However, I am trying to build the city proper. So I am moving the oh, we did reach Tiny Town, okay, well. We'll be ending the stream very shortly, but you'll notice I, I'm moving the school and the medical center clinic much closer. And this Tiny Town is a significant milestone, in my opinion. It opens up several different features. You know, the fishing industry was opened up. Before I close it off, I'm just going to do some quick uh updates. I'm also making sure the roads I want are proper amount. Believe it or not, while yes, there's lots of great DLCs out there for quality life. The actual base game of the game, that, the actual base game for City Skylines and their DLCs gives you, gives the user a lot of tools regardless. And in that situation, I realized, well, you know, it makes more sense if the circle road actually encircled something versus the other road, which is why I made that update. And I'm just making sure all the roads look proper. If you're wondering why you chose the word presenter for road. Presenter is one of the top ranks within Comstar. Addit is the base rank of all Comstar regions. You'll notice that anytime I refer to Comstar, I call them Addits. Now, you'll notice that I, I'm trying to put it to school here, and I thought I had the distance correct. I was wrong, so I'm going to make quick adjustments. Remember, no one's perfect, and sometimes you have to build a little extra so that way the roads don't, you know, connect all goofy. And even though I'm in the to- Tiny Town milestone, I'm still trying to fix this one last thing before we end. Actually, I still need to add a district. So I'm probably going to add a district as well to, to the south part. So I'm updating the road, it's alright, finally got it proper. And you'll notice that this east-south road, and I'm also now making sure that the school fits, whi- which is what I want. But the east-south road I, I'm just making, which is going to be the Addit Road, probably Addit Lane. Is a, a six lane. The east-west are the arterial roads. And again, I'm just adjusting it. I'm just trying to get, get the correct adjustment so that way we can add the high school and it fits properly. Alright, we're able to uh place the high school. However, we're going to do that next episode. I'm just setting it up. I'm just fixing the road now. Of course, our city needs water, so I'm putting the pipes, making sure the pipes are working. Putting the correct uh names of the roads. This is Addit, so I'm putting that as Addit, and I'll leave it as a boulevard, you know, that boulevards are nice. And I notice, hey, that's not the proper road names. So I get fixed it, again, you know, using vanilla assets, an easy fix. And again, presenter avenue needs to be fixed slightly. Pedestrian app area. I may do, do that next milestone. The game is reminding us that we can build an industrial area. So I'm thinking, maybe I do need to build up our districts, and see which type of district we can build. Fishing industries, yes. This is gonna be a goal for our next episode. Or the episode to that, House Karita and the fishing industry wants to grow in this area. So this will be something important. Something to grow into, right? Last thing is, let's do our residential district, and then we'll do the industry districts. I'm putting in the last of the commercial areas. I'm not trying to zoom to the next milestone too, too fast. Again, that's not this, well, you know, that's not my style. We're, we're trying to grow the city slowly and organically and using role playing. And this, I hope you appreciate. Now, there is some commercial demand and of course, industry, I, I'm sorry, I said commercial demand, I mean industrial demand. Industry is still important, we need to make goods, and also, you know, it's additional revenue and money, right? So having some slightly more industry is always useful. The residential in- industry, or district, that's what I'm saying, I'm sorry, residential district. Now, this district is not Comstar, this is for this is part of the international district, you know, for all citizens. And I'm thinking, and while I'm doing this, I'm also trying to think of a name that I want. And I'm not trying to go past that second, that eastmost uh north, south, four lane. For either districts, for either the Comstar district or the, the non-Comstar residential district. What name do I want? I'm thinking, well, this is ultimately speaking, this is going to be the old downtown area. So I'm thinking old Bo- Boyton Homes, and I'm keeping with the theme Brooklyn and Queens. I'm viewing them, I'm going to use this to signif- signify you know, a slightly older design in, in the city outlook. So in the future, when the city is a very robust city, we're gonna have several different districts, and each one is going to look slightly different. This area is gonna be like the old downtown residential area. And it's gonna look like Brooklyn and Queens. Cause I view those buildings as kind of like an older style overall. Compared to the modern city or, or Europe, European cities. Or even like the Koreans or, and all the, those others, maybe the Africans. You know, uh I believe some of those homes kind of look, you know, uh low, older looking. And you notice, most of the commercial area, you know, again, I'm not, I don't want all the commercial areas to be stopped, but you know, in, in this zone. I do want a few modern buildings here and sprinkle every once in a while. So let's look at the water and pollution and education. We're, again, we're going to do, do the high school next time. The pollution, you know, obviously the industrial area and the, and sewage. Now, this is the noise, so let's zoom in on the noise a little bit. Remember, we, we are, notice how the north is still kind of noisy. The organic commercial pollutes less and also causes less noise. But I still want a few modern, non-organic commercial buildings in the mix. But I'm going to, you know, in I'm going to add on slightly to the commercial side. So that way the residents will have slightly more organics and less noise pollution. Again, I want some, you know, and that's fine. And, and, and keep in mind, those boys residents, you know, are going to have some noise pollution in the middle, but hey, that's the cost of living here, right? And, you know, people more to the south are not going to have it because, you know, those homes are blocking it. Okay, I'm sat, more or less satisfied. I'm just, you know, tweaking it out, you know, making sure everything looks, you know, prim and proper. Eventually, I want to have, avoid trucks and uh large uh non-indust- uh residential vehicles who are passing in this area. Now, the rightmost the eastmost uh north, south, four lane will have industrial trucks. So they, they could supply the commercial areas, that's fine. We're still limited in the, some of the policies we, we can enact. Let's do the commercial side. I think, I'm thinking that since we're going to have coal for a while and electricity is becoming a problem, we'll probably have to put another coal, coal plant. So I'm thinking that this area should be our coal area, or ore area, if you will. And since, you know, it has no natural resources, this is going to be an import area. I'll, this is me for the future. I'm going to discover that we are not able to specialize in ore industrial specialization yet. You know, but it's still okay, because the main goal here is also to start changing these industrial buildings to look more Brooklyn and Queens. If there is even such a thing for industry, I'm not sure, but again, my premise is I want this area to look kind of old, kind of, you know, back built like, you know, in the nineteen twenties, nineteen forties, which the Brooklyn and Queens building seemed to look like. At least in my opinion. And this is the theme I'm going for. In this, you know, area of the international area, right? Because this is the what was originally built. And when we grow a city, let's say in a hundred years, you know, we're going to look back and says, oh, look, this is the old boy. And the buildings are going to obviously mostly look old. There'll be a few modern ones from here and there, which makes sense, which is why I'm not changing. Every single building and every single area to be Brooklyn and Queens. I, because I do want some. Modern looking, European looking type buildings. And you'll notice that self sufficient buildings are primarily Comstar buildings. So like on the residential side. You'll notice that the non Comstar residents won't have self sufficient buildings. You know, likewise, since this is the international area, all the residential buildings are trying to look like Brooklyn and Queens. The same thing for the industry. I, I didn't think about the commerce, but for right now, we're going to leave most of the commerce alone. I did click some of the com- commercial buildings here. And I'm not going to alter them, other than they should look like Queens, Brooklyn, Queens type buildings. If there is. Even such a thing for commercial. I'm, when it comes to building types like this, I'm not an expert. You know, this is something I'm not, I I've been, you know, dabbling with and I'm just discovering on my own. I hope you enjoy it though. And I hope it, you know, makes the city, you know. What I'm dreaming about. Well, I'm severely limited on the policies. I'm doing a pet ban and smoky ban in the, on the industrial side. You know, why are you going to bring pets? In in the industry side. And smoky is bad for you, you know, possibly could create fires. So that's the great, that's terrible place. We're currently in, going to be going to Boomtown. We're currently a tiny town. This is where we're going to leave off. Our goal is to move, go from tiny town to Boomtown in the next episode, place an elementary school. And maybe even build a pedestrian way as Unity Plaza. Thank you for, if you're staying here and listening to this, thank you very much. Please leave any comments or suggestions. Or even ideas in the comments. I really do read them and I really do appreciate any comment that you may be giving me. Or ideas or if you could explain to me if there is an industrial. Brooklyn, Queens or commercial Brooklyn, Queens type buildings, let me know in the comments. Is that time of the video where I'd say adios? Thank you for watching. And if you're hearing this, I really like to say thank you. For staying at this long or skipping to the end. I really appreciate it. Better yet, the YouTube gods seem to enjoy it. Please like, subscribe, click on the bell icon, send notification alerts. It really does help content creators like myself. I need the help. If you have any suggestions about my YouTube content or my channel or about this video, I'd love to hear it. Please leave a comment. Regardless, I'd like to thank you for watching. Stay safe, be entertained, enjoy life. And until next time, adios, goodbye. Hope your RNG is better than mine. Thank you.